Sorry, I was on a a little bit late, but I think we're ready to get started here. So we can call this Port of Olympia Commission Work Session to to order. I'm getting a weird thing up here. Are we are we still good?
Thanks.
Okay, yep.
Yep. And Tracy, have you begun recording? Yes, I have. Okay, great.
Okay, so we have an agenda before us. Do we need to approve that? Or are we just ready to go ahead and jump in?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, the agenda has been motioned to approved and seconded. All in favor of approved today's agenda, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, we have the agenda approved. I guess we're ready to jump in.
Yep.
So jumping into it, Rudy, it looks like. So go right ahead, Rudy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Rudy Rudolph, your Operations Director and Airport Director, for those who may not be familiar. Today, we're here to receive a presentation on the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission, sometimes referred to in the vernacular as the CAC. The Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission was a group created by the legislature to develop recommendations to meet Washington State's critical aviation system capacity needs for the future. Today, we have with us David Fleckenstein, who is the Director of WashDOT's Aviation Division and the Chairperson of the CAC, and I believe with him is Warren Hendrickson, who is the Vice Chair of the CAC. And I will turn this over to David for the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Rudy. And Commissioners, thanks for having us today. We had briefed the port while it's been almost a couple of years ago on the Commission's work and what this was all about. And so for those that don't know, the committee was really put together to address finite capacity issues with CTAC. So as CTAC eventually runs out of room, we need to expand capacity in other areas if we want to meet demand out in the year 2050. So what we're going to walk through some things about what the CAC's been up to, what our charter is, some of the things about Olympia, and then answer any questions that you might have for us. So next slide, please. First, we follow kind of rigid standards with both timelines and things that the Commission has to look at. Of what we're doing right now, we have to produce, at the end of the day, a recommendation for capacity improvements at the different locations across the state, and primarily, we have to come up with one single preferred location. But as a part of that, there are some key dates. So we just recommended a short list of in just a minute in for this year. In September of this year, we have to narrow that down to two airports. And then we have to identify a single preferred location by June 15th of 2023 by a 60% majority vote. And I have that highlighted because the date currently is February of 2023, but it's sitting on the Governor's Desk to approve an extension out to June 15th of 2023. In doing so, we have to look at a number of different things. We have to look at, you know, the feasibility of constructing a commercial facility and a location, and then the potential environmental, community, and economic impacts of doing so. The timeline for, we also have to develop the timeline. So to have additional, an additional commercial facility that is completed and functional by 2040. And we have to think about three big segments of aviation. There's commercial passenger service, there's air cargo operations, and then there's general aviation. So when we looked at these different sites, which I'm getting ready to talk about, that's the primary component that went into it. And when we look at this new site, we can include recommendations to either modify existing airports or to build a new one. And I'll tell you, the Commission has decided that the best strategy is to pursue a combination of the two, which I'll also talk about. Next slide, please. So the shortlist of six airports, again, we provided this in February of 2022. This has been out really for about a year now, but we voted and approved it. And the shortlist, if you would, just kind of build this as we go along, please. So the first one is Arlington Municipal. It was looked at, and it was decided it has the best potential for general aviation. Next slide. Bremerton was looked at and was, it was decided that it has potential for both air cargo operations and general aviation. Next, please. Payne Field was the only airport on this list that has been looked at for its potential for commercial passenger service and air cargo capacity. I will say that they already have a very robust general aviation group there, and that's likely to expand in the future. Next, please. Sanderson's Field was looked at, again, only for its potential for general aviation capacity. Next. South Lewis County was also looked at, and because of its distance from the population base, it's only being looked at for general aviation capacity. And finally, I think there's one more. Yeah, Tacoma Narrows. And Tacoma Narrows was also that potential for general aviation capacity. So if you look at this list, you can see the preponderance of the airports are being looked at to expand general aviation capacity. Only Payne Field is being looked at for its potential for commercial passenger service.
Question, oh, David, real quick. Sanderson Field, that's Shelton? Is that Shelton?
That is Shelton.
Okay, thank you.
And one of Shelton's limiting factors is, once again, it's distant from the population base. For either air cargo operations or commercial passenger service, to be acceptable to the airlines and the cargo industry, it really has to be within about an hour of the bulk of where the population base is. That's kind of what they have told us. So what does the public think about all this? We've had several engagements with the public, and two of the major ones were, one was a survey that we sent out that focused on that list of six airports. And we wanted to make sure that we got to people that were typically underrepresented. But we also had an open house that went out to statewide for people to provide comments. About 44% of the people acknowledged that we needed to make improvements for capacity, but they also acknowledged that it's going to require money, and it creates environmental impacts. The next highest response was people supported increased aviation capacity, but only if environmental impacts are mitigated. And at 36%, that's that's pretty significant. And then finally, around 19% of respondents said, we want to continue operating with our current airport facilities. So that can mean one of two things. It could be the main, people don't want any growth, and they like just what we have now, or they're saying, yes, we agree that we need to expand capacity, but we want to do it with existing facilities without building a new airport. And then finally, most people were supportive of the state pursuing the concept of a new green airport of the future, which is one of the last things I'll talk about today. Next, please. In 2020, we put together some important near or early recommendations. One is the Commission decided the best thing for us as CTAC starts to run out of room, and we need to add capacity. The best thing is, in the short term, is look at existing airports, because that's the easiest place to add capacity while we pursue a greenfield site. And the Commission members reinforced this just this year when we provided the February 2022 report. They said, yes, indeed, not only do we want an option for an existing port to expand, they also want to see an option for a greenfield site. And I'll talk about an aviation consultant. Two other significant things that were in that recommendation was looking at the environment. One, sustainable aviation fuel is very much viewed as a bridging strategy as these advanced aircraft come into fruition. Advanced, when I say advanced aircraft, I'm talking about electric, hybrid electric, propulsion. But those are kind of years off. Many of them are in development. We're not going to see them for a long time. And we're not going to see large aircraft being propelled by batteries anytime soon. So when you get on a 737, it's going to be powered by traditional fuels as we know it for some time to come, probably for the next 20 years or so. So that's a reason sustainable aviation fuel that would could reduce emissions and particulate matter is being viewed as something that we we need to pursue. And then finally, WashDOT's had an electric aircraft working group in existence for a few years now. It's been doing research in regards to what's the feasibility for all these new types of aircraft coming out. It started with electric, but it morphed into other things as additional things like advanced air mobility, urban air mobility, air taxis come into play. And and just recently, a new group was formed, and it's called the Aviation and Aerospace Advisory Committee. And that is a group that has a number of individuals from this across the state, commerce, industry, et cetera, looking at all of this advanced technology and how we would apply it within Washington State to take up, to take advantage of opportunities when the right time comes to us. Next slide, please. So the evolution of our work, things have kind of morphed since the Commission began. Well, I've already talked about the strategy of expanding one or more existing airports while we pursue a greenfield site. Because of, you know, COVID-19, we had to kind of redo some of the things that we're doing. We couldn't meet person. We had problems with community engagement, which is one of the reasons we expanded the timeline, because we wanted to make sure that people were aware of this work and that we've got feedback from the public. We put increased emphasis on hard principles for principles benefit economic feasibility, environmental responsibility, and social equity. And these have taken on kind of heightened awareness, especially when we look at impacts on from global warming, et cetera, and what a new airport could do to things like the environment. So hence the increased importance of use of the aviation system plan. So it just so happens that we're updating Washington State's aviation system plan right now. And we're taking advantage of that because it's FAA funded. And that effort, part of that is looking at greenfield site options. So we have a consultant that they're working, that we're working with that probably in this year is going to provide the Commission with some options for where we could locate a new airport from a greenfield site. And then finally, we're also taking into consideration how regional travel could issue of capacity. One of the great things about these emerging, of the emerging aeronautics technology is when you start incorporating things like electric aircraft or hybrid, they're cheaper to operate, and they're cheaper to maintain, which opens up opportunities to fly to different places where airlines typically wouldn't service those just because of the cost of doing so. So that's one of the things we're thinking about in terms of future air travel. Next slide, please. So for Olympia in particular, and I didn't even realize this, is that the amount of history that Olympia's had in the past with commercial service on and off. So you can see for years, dating all the way back to 1936, there's been some type of commercial service in and out of Olympia. Matter of fact, where my office is now, I'm in my home right now, but my office on Olympia, that's one of the old terminal buildings, the old terminal building. And my personal office used to be the waiting room, I think, for passengers trying to get on a plane. So it's not unheard of that Olympia could or had commercial service in the past. What the, and and that's one of the things I think why Rudy asked me to talk today is just to talk about not only the history, but what the port had decided, as you all know, the port decided not to be did not want to be considered for commercial operations at Olympia. But I want to, I just want to kind of point out what I think some future opportunities might be for Olympia looking at advanced aircraft. And that's where we get to this next slide, please. So we, within our division, have developed kind of something we call the Airport of the Future. And this takes into consideration where aviation is going. Just like anything else, or other modes of transportation, aviation is looking at ways to make it more environmentally sustainable over time. And we now have 16 airports within the state that are part of our sustainable aviation airport partners. They're looking to transform the airports to be kind of the airports of the future. And this is this, this is a build slide, so we'll just kind of go through it. The next build. So the first thing is airports are likely to become more multimodal as time goes by, especially when you consider the things like urban air mobility or air taxis, use of public transportation, the electric vehicles that are likely to be charging at airports. All of these things need to get, need to be taken into consideration, and their opportunities for airports to become kind of multimodal hubs. Next build. Sustainable aviation fuel, without a doubt, is becoming a part of airport infrastructure. Seattle Tacoma International now has goals for sustainable aviation fuel, so they're purchasing certain amounts. And other airports across the nation are trying to do the same thing. The problem we have right now is is producing it. Next build, please. Vertivports, vertivports unlike heliport are are really what will support advanced air mobility. So the things like air taxis will need a way to operate from, and though that concept is through vertivports. Next build. On and off-site power production. So as you look at some of the airports and all of the things that we're trying to do with transportation with virtually electrified, that requires a lot of power to do so. Airports, because of their size, have opportunities to do things where they can produce their own power, whether it's whether or not through renewables or something else, it's something that need to be considered as airports look at their future. Next, please. Unpiloted aircraft will undoubtedly become a part of airport infrastructure at some point. You know, the military has been operating piloted and unpiloted systems same error for years, you know, in overseas combat operations. We're likely to see the same thing incorporated to our airports in the future. Next build. And then finally, electric and hydrogen propulsion will at some point become the norm for airports. And this is where I think the opportunities for Olympia come into play. It's really thinking about the future and what could be done at Olympia. Being, you know, the state capital of Olympia region, or it really should be the showcase of some of this new technology. So I just think that there's opportunities to consider this as you move forward and kind of shape what the port looks like and what Olympia is going to look like in the future, especially when it comes to aviation and all the opportunities that are coming our way. It's just, it's not a matter of if, it's a when at this point. Next slide, please. Oh, and so what's next for the Commission? I mentioned the aviation system plan. Our consultant, Kimberly Horn, is going to give an update in April. At our April 20, we're having a meeting on April 20 for one hour. We'll talk about what they're doing with the aviation system plan and how that's connected to the Commission's work. They will deliver, we believe they'll deliver some greenfield options this summer in June. We are going to increase our amount of public engagement as we start narrowing those sites down from six to two. We're obviously going to focus on those areas that are likely to be on that list of two. We'll deliver a list of two preferred sites in October. But I'll tell you that what the Commission will probably do is they're going to give two recommended preferred sites, but there's going to be other recommendations built into that. And then finally, our nominations are due in June of 2023. Excellent. And I think that's it. What questions do you have for us?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
This is Amy. How do we continue to, as you said, we have the opportunity to showcase some of these green technologies and aviation of the future. How do we continue to maintain that dialogue? Given that the direction right now is that we aren't interested in what's available, how do we continue to keep that door open and dialogue happening about new technologies?
Well, one, I think you just gave Rudy his his direction. And I think that, you know, just staying involved with both the Aviation and Aerospace Advisory Committee and the things that we've been doing within WashDOT within our sustainable aviation airport partners. Those are the groups that are kind of tied in to, you know, setting the conditions to become the airports of the future.
Got it. Yeah, I think from the feedback that I've gotten from community members, there's definitely an interest from diverse stakeholders and and some of that more environmentally progressive aviation. So it'll be fun to continue to learn what you're learning, Rudy.
Well, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks, David, for this presentation. You know, I I get both sides, you know, comments from the public on both sides. One is, why can't we have commuter service at Olympia Airport? And then I get comments like, don't do anything at Olympia Airport, keep it as it is, because there's too much housing around it, too much environmental effects, and so on. So you know, but I think that, you know, I would like to see us stay involved and and, you know, be a chance to have further discussion about, you know, the possibilities of commuter service at Olympia Airport. I mean, if you're looking for ways to relieve the pressure, if there are ways to relieve the pressure on CTAC, you know, in the short term, you know, I think that where Olympia is situated is is pretty relevant to commuter commuter service. And so, you know, I'd like that to stay involved. And I I believe I'm just shooting from the hip as one Commissioner that there's no reason why we can't revisit a decision that was made, you know, in the past based on on new information. And of course, I'm also excited about electric aircraft technology. And, you know, that could dovetail right into some type of commuter service, because I think, as you mentioned, the smaller, smaller jets, it's more foreseeable and more able to do almost today is build an aircraft that can move 15 people from here to there under electric power. So.
But Commissioner, I think you hit it right on the head. That that's really where the opportunity, I think, in the near term lies for Olympia is in the commuter service operations. When we first started doing our work with electric aircraft, that's exactly what we were focused on, was how do we reopen some of the airports that either commercial service or their communities could benefit from something from something like electric aircraft. It just kind of changes the whole dynamic of where you could travel to and from, and to be able to do it affordably. And there's just the environmental impacts that are negligible once you start, you know, introducing things like electric aircraft. We don't know exactly when it's going to come, but the writing's on the wall. We're moving in that direction. There's way too much in R and D that's in the certification pipeline with the FAA right now for it not to come to fruition in some shape and form.
Great.
I just had a comment about the Airport of the Future. That looks pretty interesting, actually. It it and if, if I'm not mistaken, it looks like it's almost a, you're creating a microgrid for energy and and so it would be completely self-sufficient and maybe even have surplus to to share with the with the outside, outside of the airport. So that's pretty interesting. One thing, I guess one thing I'd just like to mention that, you know, I I would like to see us keep in mind for, you know, the future of the airport is how it can be, how it can be available in in the case of an emergency that, you know, maybe the I-5 corridor is blocked off and we're blocked off from the, either the north or the south or both. You know, how we, how, how, how can we utilize that airport to keep the the supply chain going? And, you know, surely there's a little something that we can do to help ease any, any emergency pain like that.
Commissioner, two, two points. You may not, you probably don't know it at this point, but half of our building is actually set up to be the coordination center to plug into the state. So it's it's wired with backup generators, all kinds of radio, satellite phones, et cetera, to do just what you're talking about. In regards to the microgrid, you're, you're right on. So what we figured out when we were doing the early work with this electric aircraft study is that airports, one, they have, they have more of an opportunity to become more multimodal than they currently are. And they could have hubs for transport, given their space and the things that feed into them. But at the same time, if you think about electrifying cars, if you think about public transportation, the airport needs themselves, and then you throw aircraft on top of that, the power needs aren't fully understood yet, but I think they're, they're quite high. As a matter of fact, we're doing a, some work right now through the University of Washington at Payne Field in Grant County International, where we're studying just that thing. What what are needs of the future, and how would we facilitate it at some of the airports?
Pretty interesting stuff. Any other questions? Rudy, you have anything you want to add on there?
No, sir. Well, yes, actually, one additional thing is to say, as, you know, a lot of these things that David's talked about is independent and separate from the CAC, but part of our airport master plan update, which it it would be a normal course of our action and a master plan update anyway. So there are a lot of things that that he talked about that we're, we're looking at on a parallel course, if you will. And I look forward to coming to the Port Commission in the future as we start to do those briefs.
Warren, did I miss anything?
No, you nailed it, David, as you always do. So the only thing I could probably offer to the Commissioners is my personal thanks to David and the entire WashDOT Aviation staff. They have behind the scenes done all the heavy lifting with research, data, procurement, publications, and instrumentation and and logistics for the benefit of the entire Commission. And the entire Commission members, it, we truly do have the right team at the table to to make this decision. The number of backgrounds, the expertise collectively across the entire 25 members of the Commission is, is it's an outstanding group to work with, and I I feel very privileged to share that table with them.
Well, thanks, Warren. It's a team effort.
All right, well, thank you. Anything else? Anything else for these folks?
So again, one more question for David. Thanks. So I don't have the slides in front of me, but within the year, you're going to be talking about those airports that won't be a recommendation for a second CTAC, but rather enhanced operations. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have, we have no airport right now that's an existing airport that could be another CTAC. It's just a matter of space and, you know, the way things are right now.
Right. Can you give us a hint? Can you give us a hint, like, not Thurston County, but, you know, maybe? I mean, whatever's south of us. I'm not a, you can tell I'm not a Washington native. It's a county straight south. Anyone? Louis, Louis, thank you.
So Commissioner, are you talking about where the potential greenfield sites might go?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, I think our this, here's the instructions that we gave to our our aviation consultant was that we need to look at locations that were within an hour's drive time, but we also need to look at locations that would be outside of that. Because at the end of the day, something outside of an hour's drive time may be what's most acceptable to people. It would be, it's going to be very hard to locate something within an hour's drive time that doesn't have some It would be, it's going to be very hard to locate something within an hour's drive time that doesn't have some kind of impact in regards to, you know, either property or something else. Other than that, I myself don't know if there's a front runner to, that's, that's how transparent we're trying to be.
Well, I know that Moses Lake is, is that the, yeah, they have a gigantic airport in terms of acreage. Um, have they put their name in the hat for anything?
So Grant County International is what you're talking about, Commissioner. And yes, you're right. They have a large land mass. They have a 10,000 foot runway. But to be quite honest, they're too far away from the population base to support a large commercial operation. I mean, the, the, the travel time for where the, the people live to get there, we're talking three, four hours just to, you know, get there. This side of the state. So it really has to be something on this side of the state if we want to supplement, uh, C TAC.
Thank you. I understand.
Well, Commissioners, thanks again for having us, um, today.
Thanks for being here.
And let us know how we can help in the future.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to, um, the tribal honor statement. Which we may or may not call it that at the end of the day. Um, I, I'm really, uh, I don't know if you, if you've had a much of a chance to review. I'll, I'll just read the statement real quick, um, to, uh, kind of give you an update of what, what I'm thinking and recommending to our, uh, my fellow commissioners as far as, uh, uh, land acknowledgement or, or, uh, uh, tribal honor statement. Um, so these are the slides that we'll see here in a minute. They show how the relocation of tribes to reservations affected the way of life natives grew accustomed to over centuries of living on vast areas of land that provided everything needed to live comfortably. The recent trend to acknowledge the wrongful treatment of natives through land acknowledgements statements is appreciated. However, does not reverse the negative effects that it had on an entire culture of human beings. I wasn't personally raised on a reservation, but as a young boy growing up in the 1960s, I remember visiting my great grandmother's house here on the reservation. Her house, along with all the other homes on the, on the Nusqually Reservation, there was no indoor plumbing or electricity. And reservations were associated rightly so with extreme poverty. It's appreciated that people today recognize and acknowledge the poor treatment of Native Americans through tribal land acknowledgement statements. I would like to point out that there are several groups considered, considered minorities who have also been mistreated through racism and discrimination. African Americans, Asian Americans, there's a growing Latino community. Women and others have suffered poor treatment by those who've made the rules over the last centuries. I propose that the Port of Olympia become leader in diversity, equity, inclusion by setting example for others to follow. The port is a municipal corporation that's purpose is to create economic opportunity in Thurston County in supporting minority women-owned businesses. And, uh, excuse me, and supporting women and minority-owned small businesses is a vehicle to accomplish that purpose. Tribal governments have lifted native people out of extreme poverty, poverty by creating our own economies on and off the reservation. Today, in Thurston County, the three tribes that live and work here contribute a great deal to the local economy by providing living wage jobs to local residents and attracting visitors from other areas. As the late Chehalis tribal member Chris Richardson suggested in his daily op ed, um, in, in his daily Olympian op ed, the port should seek government-to-government relationships by entering into memorandum of understanding, uh, which means the port commits to enter direct consultation on matters of mutual interest with the local tribes. The Port of Olympia is in a position to use our upcoming strategic planning to include objectives that promote and support local minority-owned businesses. Rather than reading a standard land acknowledgement statement at the start of each meeting, I propose that we lead by example and create action items through strategic planning and report back to the public our successes in collaborating and supporting a diverse, strong and sustainable economy for all of Thurston County. So we can real quickly go through the, uh, um, the slides. Uh, I think the, the slides are, are just kind of a summary of, of what I, uh, what I just said, or actually maybe in more detail to what I just said. Um, you know, the Nusqually tribe, which naturally I have the most connection to. Um, you know, our, our tribe has lived here since time immemorial. Uh, we, we occupied about 2 million acres of, of land that stretched from, uh, Mount Rainier to, to Puget Sound. And the, the river and the lands around the river always supplied in, you know, um, always supplied everything we needed to, uh, to, to, uh, to live. And, and, you know, the salmon especially is the mainstay of our diet and the foundation of our culture. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the Medicine Creek Treaty, uh, signed in 1854. Uh, it established a 1,280 acre reservation for Nusqually, um, which was located away from the river. In 1856, an executive order to enlarge the reservation, uh, to about 4,700 acres, uh, took, took effect. And in the winter of 1917, the US Army ordered, ordered our families from, from our homes without any warning at all. In Pierce County, uh, excuse me, then later in Pierce County condemned about 3,300 acres of our reservation and transferred it to, um, to expand, uh, what we now know as Joint Base Lewis McCord. Next slide, please. I gotta. Today, 3,300 acres of the Nusqually Reservation land remain part of Fort Lewis. And, uh, you can see on the map there that orange, that orange section there, that's, uh, or excuse me, everything east of the river in that orange section is all, has all been transferred to the army. And the remaining 1,700 acres on the west side of the river, um, that's a combination of tribal ownership, uh, individual, uh, or yeah, tribal ownership, individual Indian ownership and non-Indian ownership. Next slide, please. Um, Squawson Island, uh, you know, the, the, the information I found for them, uh, they were a little more, um, overarching with the, with their, uh, with their history that I found. They talk also, they're also a, a signatory to the Medicine Creek, um, treaty. And, uh, they talk about the, uh, uh, let's, let's see, let's go to the next slide. Uh, they talk about the 4,000 square miles that, uh, that, uh, Squawson Island, Chehalis, yeah, Squawson Island, Chehalis and, uh, Nusqually and Puyallup tribes, all, we all, uh, survived on, on that much land and, uh, and, and now we've been forced onto three months, three small reservations. Next slide, please. Uh, the Chehalis tribe went through, uh, you know, similar situation where, um, they had been, uh, uh, forced onto reservations. Um, let's go ahead, go ahead to the next slide. In 1864, the majority of the Chehalis people were moved, uh, without protective provisions of a federal treaty. Uh, Chehalis people were, uh, not part of the, uh, Medicine Creek Treaty. Um, let's see. Let's go ahead and go to the last slide. I think that's the last slide. At any rate, um, we've talked about doing a, a tribal honor statement before, and, uh, we've had suggestions by the public, uh, to do a tribal honor statement or a land acknowledgement statement. And, uh, um, I, you know, I, I just think, I just feel like we can do one better and, and, uh, actually make it part of our strategic planning to be, become that social responsible entity that, uh, that promotes, that promotes, uh, economic development, um, through all of the, um, so that we benefit everybody. Um, anyway. Open to comments.
I just, if I may, Commissioner Eil.
Yes.
Uh, I just really appreciate, uh, having your guidance and leadership as a tribal member. Um, my lived experience as a woman can offer me some insight, but I continue to learn of my own ignorance as it pertains to many of the, uh, these issues. So I really appreciate what you're saying. I would love to see us integrating equity into our work rather than just making performative statements. Um, knowing that you represent, uh, Nusqually and have a lot of insight there. I did speak with leadership at the Squawson Tribe and Chehalis Tribe. Um, and I think that what I heard echoed from, uh, those tribal members was similar to what you're saying of really integrating, um, integrating this into the work rather than making a statement. Um, however, all of the commissioners want to do that. I'm open to. I think if we are going to do a land acknowledgement, there are some nuances to that that we would have to consider. But if we decide, uh, uh, taking a more strategic approach to integrating it in the work, I, I, I'm fully in support of that. And having a government-to-government meeting, um, with tribal leadership or however we see best fit to build those relationships and, um, figure out where we can work together. So thank you for, for the history as well. I think it helps give us context as to why, um, we need to look at this. And yeah, I would, uh, be interested what Commissioner Downing's thoughts are as well, given that he had gone through some of the discussions previously. And if this feels like it addresses some of the concerns from before with this approach.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Downing, anything?
Thank you, uh, Chairman Eil. Um, you know, I agree with Commissioner Evans. I want to be supportive of your lead on this issue. Really, it's, uh, extremely personal because there's a lot of people in our community that feel like making statements or changing names of things, and, and that's appropriate. We had the example of, for example, Priest Point Park about to be renamed to Squawson Park. So that's like, that's a, you know, that's a, a thing, but it's not totally personal. And so I like your approach, which is to, uh, commit to working with the tribes, all three of those tribes, and to create partnerships, um, which are more important and more long-lasting, you might say, than, uh, than a tribal honor statement. So we went, uh, you know, not that, uh, tribal honor statements are bad in any way. There's several, uh, government entities that do have those, so I don't want to take away from that. And I, I guess I don't want to take away from, uh, renaming things or, or making statements because those are personal to, uh, some people too. But I, you know, support your approach, which is to, uh, you know, create, uh, better relations and, uh, along the lines of equity and inclusion. So I support that and I'm willing to, and I agree that, uh, you know, we can, uh, put the tribal honor statement, uh, so-called, you know, on the back burner for the time being at the Port of Olympia. So I'm good with it.
Thank you. And, and just, uh, one last, one last thing I was going to mention too, that, you know, uh, part of that was communicating with the local tribal governments and, um, uh, you know, having a direct consultation for, on matters of mutual interest. And, you know, I think even beyond the mutual interest and, uh, although we do set, definitely have a mutual interest in economic development and go beyond that, especially in the environmental, um, um, arena. Uh, you know, I know, I know, I know Nusqually and I, I think, uh, Squawson also. Uh, you know, our, uh, we have a, a, a number of highly skilled divers out here at Nusqually, and I'm, I'm sure Squawson does as well. Um, and they would love to use their skills on a, you know, i- any way it might help in a cleanup project of anywhere in Puget Sound. So just, you know, one of many things that, uh, that there really is, uh, you know, um, mutual interest in, in, in some items there. So. Anyway, thanks for that. And we will, uh, we will, uh, be looking, uh, looking for, um, actions and programs, uh, related to the government-to-government relationships and, uh, look at putting this on our strategic planning agendas as well. So thank you all for that. Okay, so, uh, next item on the agenda, upcoming topics and agenda items, um, Executive Director Dibben.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just as a, a brief follow-up to the previous item, um, I will be, uh, working to, uh, we are working to schedule our next strategic planning, uh, process and working to provide some materials related to government-to-government relations and diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, uh, programs, particularly at ports.
Thank you.
Um, Tracy, I think you have the wrong, wrong one up. This is the previous one. We just finished that one. Yep. Thank you. And thank you for making those corrections.
I'm sorry, just a moment, please. I apologize. I didn't have that one up. Okay.
And that was actually Tracy caught a mistake. I had included today's calendar, uh, on our upcoming topics. And she was like, wait a minute, we just finished that. So she made a correction and now she's pulling that presentation up. Tracy, do you have it? Cause I, I, I can get to it pretty quickly.
I'm pulling it up right now. So sorry, Sean.
Nope.
Systems always take forever. My apologies.
Yeah. Especially when, when people are waiting. It's like watching water boil. Alrighty. There you go. So, uh, next Monday will be a regular commission meeting. We will have the, uh, two resolutions coming back to the commission for action. The first being changes to the small city program and the second, uh, revisions, proposed revisions to the commission rules resolution. We'll also be bringing back for commission, uh, consideration, a consultant contract regarding the, uh, request and process for FAA land release, um, in specific as, as related to the Oyo Hotel. We also have as an action other item, a legal services contract that'll be specifically legal services for Port General Counsel. And bringing this, uh, uh, to you for action other, given that we, uh, did have our Port General Counsel resign and we needed to have, um, something done fairly rapidly so we can get, um, a recommended, uh, outside firm on contract. And then last but certainly not least is in keeping with some of the operational briefings we've done, is a real estate briefing from Mr. Allen Rowe. Next slide. Next slide. On Monday, April eleventh, and again, we're back to our what is old is new schedule of skipping the first week in April for meetings. So this will be the second week. It'll be April eleventh. We will be having a legislative update briefing from our lobbying consultant and there be talking about the recently concluded legislative session and topics that were specific interest to the port as well as an update on our Thurston County legislative agenda. I do have a briefing scheduled for Bud Inlet and still working to confirm that that schedule. I I think that will work. And then again, an operational briefing on the Marine Terminal, which, as I've been letting you know, has been very, very busy. Next slide. On April eighteenth, it's a work session. We will be bringing forward the Small Cities Program Proposals. This is where our partners at the Small Cities come and talk about their grant proposals that they have brought forward. We also have a briefing regarding the Thurston Strong Program, of which the port has been a participant since the beginning. And then hoping to confirm that Ron Thomas will be able to join us for a update on Destination Waterfront. This is a list that I keep of topics that have been voted on or recommended as scheduling for for staff. This really just serves to help keep track to make sure that when the commission is saying we we would like to have a work session on this, that I'm not dropping anything, have anything falling through the cracks. I will note that at the last meeting, there were a couple topics that were brought up that were actually not voted on. And so just doesn't matter, housekeeping, I think it would probably be good at the next meeting to affirm that indeed, the majority of the commission would like to have these added to the list for work copy upcoming to work topics. And that's it for that. Yes.
Well, thank you for recognizing me. Sam, could you go back to slide five, please? For that last slide, it was the last slide. So I'd like to make a motion that we move this item to the to future work session. And that is the procedure for one commissioner to send information to another commissioner through staff. I'd like to, I was hoping to get a commission to agree to put that on a future work session. I don't know when, but I just like to move it up on that list to the upper upper half there. Thank you, Commissioner Amy. Commissioner Evans.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a motion, a motion to help me out here, Commissioner Downing.
Sure. A motion to create a work session item which deals with the procedure for one commissioner to send information to other commissioners through staff.
Okay, a motion to add to a work session item for communication between one commissioner to another commissioner through staff. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that motion passes, so we'll add that to a work session and maybe just one quick comment on that. I I I apologize that, you know, I missed the vote on our last at our last meeting on those topics. I that one, that one just got away from me. So in, you know, in the future, Commissioner Downing or Commissioner Evans, if I if I miss something like that, please don't hesitate to remind me. I'm 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 not going to take offense to that. I would appreciate your, your pointing that out. And and then the other thing is too, I thought maybe if that if you were to make that in the form of a motion, then then I'd certainly know that it was something we need to vote on. So.
Can I also make a motion that we move the hydrogen fueling as well as the Pocac integration or implementation Vision twenty fifty to a work session as well?
Second, I'll second both those.
Okay, Commissioner Evans, help me out here.
Move, move to, move the hydrogen fueling and the Pocac Subcommittee up to a work session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the hydrogen fuel conversation and the Pocac Pocac item up to a work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion, sorry, discussion. I don't want to talk against it because I seconded it, but I do want to say that on the hydrogen fuel thing, I'm corresponding by email back and forth with the people I met that had a gave an informal presentation not on port premises and they, today they emailed me their slide bank, which then I can share with the other commissioners through staff and you know, so if if we approve it and move it up to a work session level, then hopefully or of course, put Sam in the loop so that we somehow coordinate with the date on that. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Evans, anything else? All right, I have no comments. So the motion, a motion has been made and seconded to add the hydrogen fuel and Pocac topics to our next work session or to a work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that that motion passes then. Ready to move on to the next item, which is factors affecting minimum acceptable price for sale or lease of port property. Executive Director Sam Gibbony, that's you again.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Commissioner. So as many of you know, the RCWs allow for a governing body to hold an executive session to consider the minimum price at which real estate would be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action for selling or leasing public property shall be taken at a meeting open to the public. As many of you are also aware, there's been further case law and guidance offered that before recessing to an executive session, it is the best practice to have discussion about which of those topics will be discussed in executive session. And and then that no decisions will will be made and that any other further action will be considered in public. So we we have scheduled an executive session to discuss factors affecting minimum price. Those factors to be discussed in executive session include the existing use of the property, the existing revenue and expenses related to the property, the projected revenue and expenses related to to the property, and the consistency with port policies and strategic objectives. We've not yet publicly identified this property and will not not be doing so at this point, but wanted to have this short identification of factors that we will be discussing in executive session with a focus on how they may affect the acceptable minimum price.
Right. So with that, it sounds like we will be moving into executive session. How much time do we need?
I think we should, we had scheduled an hour. And so if you want to state that, and again, we gave you a script that, you know, the the auditor really likes it when you're specific with the time that we will be reconvening here.
All right, I was just double checking the the time we needed for this. So the commission will now meet in executive session to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease as allowed by RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero one C. The commission will be in executive session for approximately sixty minutes until which would be four thirty five PM today. The commission is not expected to take further action following the executive session. So we can jump into executive session now.
So what we can research there and you should have the links to the executive session and then we'll come back out here and adjourn in the regular session.
Well, thanks for clarification of a technical nature. So do you want us to leave this meeting and go look for another link for the executive session?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Downing, I sent you an email right before this meeting that had both links in it because you'll need to then staff is going to keep this meeting up and and waiting for you to return in an hour. And the email that I sent has both links so that you can easily toggle between those two Zoom links. So you have to log out of this one and then log into the executive session and then do that in reverse when you're ready to come back.
Okay, good. Thank you. Got it.
Okay, bye.
And here he comes.
I just went through all that muted. You didn't hear me.
Yeah, we didn't hear a thing.
And I did such a good job.
Oh, no.
Well, I apologize. So what I'm doing now is I'm calling the regular meeting back to order.
Yep.
Now for the minutes, the commissioner, the commission just concluded an executive session at four thirty five. No decisions were made and there is no further action at this time. And having no further action for the regular work session, I now formally adjourn that meeting.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all and see you soon.
See you soon. Bye.
All right, bye.